All right, it's time to have our zoning meeting tonight. Tonight, we're going to have two meetings, one of public hearing and one of regular zoning meeting. We'll start by opening the public hearing. Roxbury Zoning Commission, Roxbury, Connecticut, December 12th, 2022 at 7:30 PM. We'll call to order our meeting and seat members. Members present tonight are, he's not there. There she is, Kim Testor, Lane Curley, Jim Conway, myself, Bill Horgan, Ellen Johnson's away. So we'll seat an alternate member. Who's seated last?
The next one in line would be Cheryl, who is not here. And there's a tie between Chris and Candy.
Who was?
Seated in October was the last time.
Were you, were you?
They were both on in October.
Yeah, one for special meeting and one for the regular meeting. I don't know how that happened, but do you remember? I don't know. It's a while ago, so.
Yeah, I have the notes.
So it could be either.
You want to flip a coin?
Arm wrestling?
I'd be in the middle.
All right, so.
It doesn't matter, either way.
You choose then, Bill. Yeah, you'll be the arbiter.
Ladies.
All right.
Candy. You're seen it as a regular member tonight.
For Alan, okay.
All right, so before we start the meeting, this is a zoning meeting, but before we start the public hearing, I think it's important we take a moment to recognize and remember Peter Phyllis, the chairman of the planning commission, who passed away two weeks ago. And, you know, and recognize his devotion to family and generous nature and spirit of volunteering in Roxbury and to certainly to his military service. And he was basically, as I saw him and knew him, he was the epitome of a great person. And that we remembered and sorely missed by all of us. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah.
Would you like?
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll get on with our public hearing. Legal notices went just to voices. And the legal notice that went to voices was Roxbury Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 12th, 2022 at 7:30 PM in the Roxbury Town Hall. The purpose of this hearing is to solicit public comment on an application by Dan and Stephanie Demol for a special permit with an addition on their home at 61 Moosehorn Road under section 3.10 of the Roxbury zoning regulations. At this hearing, interested persons may be present and heard, but written communications will be accepted. This application is on file in the Roxbury Land Use Office, and the office of the town clerk can be reviewed during normal business hours. This hearing can also be accessed via Zoom or phone as follows. Are there any written comments or notifications, Karen?
This also went to the town clerk's office as well, on the same day, so.
I didn't say that, okay.
No, it's not written there, so I'm just letting you know.
So the, let's see, the adjoining, we got the adjoining abutting orders. There were two of them, right? All right, so that's taken care of, so that's confirmed. So Dan, why don't you step up and show us what you've got?
Sure. So we live on 61 Moosehorn. We have, it's an 1801 house. It's on the road, like most of the old homes are, on the dirt road in Moosehorn. We're looking at adding an addition off the backside of the house laterally. The full addition will be beyond the setback, so all exist outside of the 50-foot setback. The addition will, proposed addition will be within the 25% allowance for expanding non-conforming structure dwelling. The roof line will also be below our existing roof line, which I think is one of the ones as well, number 31071. I presented some drawings, I think, that are in there. If we want to show those, I brought them with me today, a little bit larger, that may be easier to see what the intent of the addition is. We're trying to keep it within the spirit of the home. The reason we bought the home was because of the 1801 character. Even though I hit my head on every threshold in the house being 6'5", I still, we still like it, and so we wanted to match a lot of that. And we chose an architect that has a lot of experience doing that. We haven't done full CAD drawings yet, but we've done all the preliminary drawings here that were included in the packet. We're adding one bedroom to go to a full four-bedroom. We've had two children since we bought the house nine years ago, so we're looking at expanding that to allow for a grandparent to come and stay with us in the home without setting up the couch. Scott Weaver, he's out of Washington.
Good looking house. I'd grow by it.
Yeah, and so this is the existing house right here, and this is the house, the proposed addition. There's actually a big maple tree that sits right here, too, that blocks most of the addition as well from the road. And out the back, this is the back part of the addition, same thing. This is the existing home. This will be the addition that will be visible from the facade.
I'm just passing around.
Basically, it looks like a standard L.
Yeah. Yep, here's the, this is the 1801 portion of the house, and then it comes, our proposed addition here sits below the roof line. Here's the existing roof line, or below the roof line, is our proposal.
Will this be the second addition?
Yeah, there was an addition, there was an addition done at some point prior to us owning it, I think in the early 80s potentially, that is, came off the back of the 1801.
It doesn't matter.
Put the garage.
Did you have to, is it back as far as it is because you had to get back behind the 50 foot, so you're, you're right at the 50 foot?
I think we're, I mean, we're doing it because I'm on the inside. There's two windows on the interior that sort of sit next to the fireplace, and the addition will remove those two windows, and that'll be the hallways into the other room. So I think there's some leeway in the setback, but within a foot, it's up to the setback, it's up to the setback. I have a survey as well. It shows the setbacks.
Do you see?
Yeah, I can see it.
It should be in the packet as well. The survey shows that the addition will be beyond the setback as well as beyond the 100 foot from the wetlands as well. So we're obviously going to have to go and deal with wetlands to make sure we do everything they need as far as maintaining the soil and all of that, because there is a pond on our property.
I don't mean to be difficult because I'm away, but would you mind, could someone just pull the site plan?
Like the side frame?
Sure.
Yeah, the, the one that shows this, the setbacks.
Can we carry it closer?
Take a sign.
Yeah, I'll take a sign.
I do. Is that legible for you?
It is. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I think he's got a copy of it.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
What Kim was looking for with the septic circle was well.
What were you looking, Kim?
This is square footage.
You got all the setbacks?
We're adding 400 square feet.
400, yeah. So the dimensions of the addition.
200 square feet, it's 20 by 20, basically.
You're actually under the.
We're getting, we're just under, because we're actually taking down some of the, there's an old.
Proposed addition, the dark one, yeah. But they also have proposed pool.
Some of the footprint as well.
And terrace.
So when you have that extra few feet extra, you can put a couple of extra quotes around it.
We could. And this is the interior plan. Just approve. Does it all by hand, he does great work.
Existing septic system.
Yeah, so the septic is up the hill.
Up the hill, yeah.
And the leach fields are up the hill, so we'll have to talk to Newtown to make sure that it's. For sure. He's just grumbling because of the Mets season, I'm sure. Me, too. I know, we have a good offseason, we'll see.
Spending some money.
441, that's.
Also included, the letters from the neighbors. They, they were okay with the plan. I would never want to, you know, put construction up without letting them know. We're very close to them. They're supportive of what we're trying to do. They want to keep us on the road.
Well, that's just additional. You don't really need the layers.
It was nice, same with Ms. Finn, who Joel and Anne lived across the road for many years. She's retired, but she still owns part of the property around her house. It was nice of her to send it out as well.
Well, have any questions for, yeah?
I'm not sure I understand why you don't feel the adjoining neighbors have to be notified because this is.
They were notified. He was saying they didn't have to send a letter.
I'll come over there.
They were notified.
Yeah.
In addition to that, they sent in a favorable letter.
I have a question about the statement you make here. This is our first extent expansion to build this. You're allowed 25%, 441, the max you can expand is 444, so you have three feet. You can expand beyond that. So did you mean this is going to be our only expansion, not first expansion?
We would be, you're only allowed, you're allowed multiple expansions within the 25%, so this is our, presumably, we want to do a three-foot extension.
Right, right. No, I just want to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, the way it was written is this is our first expansion, and I looked at the numbers like, wait, we'll look.
Oh, there might be another one coming along.
Gotcha.
Right, right, right.
I think I did that because of the way that the language reads it, the zoning rules, you have to.
Right, if you had done the 200 foot, then you were allowed another 200, whatever.
We had never.
441, you're allowed three feet.
Right, which we would not.
No other questions?
It's complete.
All right, no other questions? Can entertain a motion to close the hearing and adjourn the meeting.
Motion to close public hearing.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public hearing is closed? All right, you're free to go, but you can stay around.
Sure. I mean, I can listen.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much, I really appreciate it.
Listen, you are the excuse for not going home.
We've got about 12 minutes until they go to sleep, so.
That's yours, awesome.
Yeah, you can keep that. I'll need an extra copy. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, so it's time to open our regular meeting of the Roxbury Zoning Commission. Roxbury, Connecticut, Monday, December 12th, 2022 at 7:45 PM. Open the meeting by seating our regular members. Same members as before, Kim, Testor, Lane Curley, Jim Conway, and myself, Bill Horgan. Now, this is another meeting. Do we move up another alternate?
No.
Yeah, and she had to be part of that, yeah.
Still stay.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll seat Candy Valeri for Ellen Johnson. There's no public comment, so. We will, first, number four on the agenda is approval of minutes of November 14th meeting.
I have a couple of things.
The November 14th meeting of a public hearing for the Roxbury Pizza.
The minutes.
Yeah, Bill, I have a couple of things for tho, for those minutes. My name, under legal notices, just I only want to finish my name, so it says. And then on the second page, I think fourth paragraph, and Candy, you'll have to say this, but it says responding by Candy, I think it should say responding to Candy Valerius. Response is on page two.
Yeah, responding to.
Yeah.
Responding by Candy's question, so it should be responding to.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Difka noted the oven.
Yeah.
Oh, fifth paragraph, sorry, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Let's see it.
One, two, yeah.
Responding to, got it.
That's all.
All right, no other, no other corrections? We'll just approve all the minutes, all three sections at once.
No, we have to each one.
Each one, all right. So your motion to approve the Roxbury Pizza public hearing meeting.
This is Elaine. I need to accept the minutes of the public hearing dated November 14th as amended.
A second? All seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the public hearing minutes of last month are approved of December, November 14th. Next public hearing opt out, that's not applicable, right, Karen?
That's just a set of minutes that have to be approved, too.
That doesn't have to be approved?
It does. There's three sets of minutes, that's the second one, yeah.
All right.
This is Kim. I didn't see anything in those. Any issues?
All right, that's just the opting out section. No other corrections noted?
No.
So I'll take them.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the opt out.
Second, I second it. All in favor? The public hearing opt out minutes are approved. And now our regular meeting.
Right, one more set.
I had just a couple of things on that, and I don't know how you want to handle this with the October 18th. The approval of those minutes, because I abstained, I wasn't there, and it said unanimous. I, I don't know, because there, I think there were several people who weren't there.
I can go back and look and see what.
Yeah, I mean, you can, we can probably just say who was there and who wasn't. That was the special meeting. I, I wasn't.
Okay.
And then the other thing was under special event application, and I'm sorry, I don't have where that's located. It's that conversation. It was the first selectman that asked the zoning to consider it.
It was on the last page, page.
Okay.
What did I say, border selectmen?
Yeah. Yes, please.
Okay.
And that's all I've got.
Any other corrections?
Make motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting November 14th.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All the regular meeting minutes of last month, November 14th are approved.
As amended, right?
As amended. All right. Next on the agenda, number five, report of zoning enforcement officer John.
Good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing? Actually, it's a pretty good report because it finally slowed down for the month of December. We've got some breathing room downstairs. So with that time, I've been redoing our files where we'll be able to go to one location and pull out everything. The zoning file and the wetlands file, we both married together, so you pull out the entire house. And then eventually, hopefully, we can do something with the ZBA and corporate everything, so we don't have to go to three different locations or four to try and find us. It's labor intensive, but it's, we got progress. Patrick got some new cabinets, so it's really kind of fun. As far as the zoning issues, I have to ask you guys to help me along this one. Bill, I believe you went there, 308 Southbury Road. Just about a year, a little over a year ago, we had an African come in. They bought the property, they took out the permits, wetlands, everything got approved, Newtown Health, zoning, et cetera. They started clearing a lot to build their house. Fantastic, nothing going wrong there. He did put up a shed with no permits, but we handled that. He got the NOV, he went back around, and so we were back on the straight and narrow. We were doing well. Shortly after that time, Oswaldo, the homeowner, bought a new piece of property, yeah, there's our concern, bought a new piece of property, and he put all his focus and intentions on restoring that one. I got a complaint from the neighbor who faces this because it is one of our famous shared driveways, so that is his front yard, what he's looking at. Talking to Oswaldo, he doesn't know when he's going to get back to this, or if he's going to get back to this, or he doesn't know what he's doing, so he left this in disarray. The neighbor across the way is reaching out to me to see what I can do. I'm looking, scratching my head, trying to come up if I can issue an NOV, if I could do anything along those lines. I can't find it. I just don't think I can issue an NOV. I called Oswaldo, talked to him, and he's just, basically, he may sell it, he may sit on it, he may do nothing with it. I don't really know where to go forward with this issue. So if you guys could help me out with that, I would love some insight.
I mean, the, the town doesn't have a blight ordinance. You know, there's nothing written that would prevent. I don't know, I, I.
Yeah, I mean.
I was looking at the regulations, too, after, you know, getting this, to see if there was anything in there, and there really isn't that I could find.
Yeah, you go to, time of construction is 7.5, but that doesn't, doesn't give us anything. And you go to administrative in 18, it says the permit's only good for a year. But that doesn't give us anything. I mean, you can always renew a permit, so the permit expired, who cares? It expired. It just means he has to come back and spend another 140 bucks.
Right, exactly. That's what the one I saw, too.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I feel sorry for the guy across the street to look at this, and I, I don't think.
John, this is Bill. Wetlands has a maximum area that you can clear without.
Yeah, he went through wetlands, he's all approved, there's no wetlands violations. The worst thing that could happen is if the silt fence falls down. I mean, he's all approved for wetlands, and then he would have to go back and apply it in two years, do it again, but it was all engineered, it was a NEF design, it would not. There's no concerns with that.
So lurking in our regulations, is there a restriction on clearing in addition to wetlands clearing?
No. No, the only thing we have for tree clearing with fauna, wetlands, and he was approved for that.
John, it's Chris Aggerde. Is the site stabilized?
Yeah, I mean, it's solid ground right there. The wetlands is all to the right-hand side of that shed there. There, there's no broken earth. It's just, he dropped trees and supplies.
Right.
John, is that a barrel?
There's a whole bunch of debris. You really, there's a lot of stuff going on there.
Because I wonder if there's anything hazardous in that barrel, potentially hazardous.
Where's the barrels? The pink thing?
Those are roofing shingles.
Roofing shingles.
Those are shingles.
Blue barrel and the.
Yes, what's that?
Is that a tree stump?
I don't know. Or is that a wall? I don't know what it is. Oh, no, the pink things, no. I mean, over here, right.
If that's the only thing we can see.
I don't think there'd be anything hazardous there, because he's like, you know, he's just cut trees and put some construction tools there.
Yeah.
Yeah, but with construction, couldn't he have like motor oil and, you know, things like that?
No, I mean, that would be such a long shot. I highly doubt that.
Yeah, that does look like a barrel, and barrels generally have something, it's stored, it's not just water.
Well, I mean, I can take a look, but that wouldn't be a zoning issue. That'd be a Newtown Health issue.
Right, right, well, that's what I need.
Yeah, I mean, I'll take a look, but I mean, I've been there, I've walked all over, and if there was something obvious like that, that would give me something to go with, but no, I don't think that's anything.
John, you've spent time on this, looking into it, and you've uncovered nothing, no way you can.
I've asked around also, I went outside of just our little world of Roxbury, through Tazio, stuff like that. I can't find anything without a blight. We've there's nothing.
Yeah, right.
Is there a state ordinance or reg?
What, you mean for completion of things?
Well, no, I mean for lights.
No.
I don't know. Light, because it's natural, but.
Not that cutting and.
That's not natural. John, this is Elaine. Did you ask him for the sake of neighborly relations to clear it up a little bit?
Yeah, I had a long conversation with him. He seems okay, but he is so focused on this other property. He basically said he's, he's not coming back to this one for a while. He said maybe late spring and summer, he might come back and do something, but he, he bought a house up on Garnet that needed a lot of work, and he's focused on that at the moment.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I, I don't see that there's really anything that we can do. I mean, you've already tried the neighborly conversation, and you've got information, and, you know, I, I think that's just a tough situation because it, it's exacerbated because of the shared driveway, you know.
Exactly, that's the big concern.
I think that's the issue, yeah.
No, no doubt.
So. Yeah.
It just seems pretty easy to me that somebody might want to come in and take the wood away for fire. For firewood.
You know, I could reach out to him and see, maybe I could.
That's actually a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, I like the idea. Maybe we could, I could water and make something happen with that. I'll try. I'll try anything.
That's a great idea.
You know?
Yep.
Yeah.
The log's ready to go, so.
So yeah, I'll reach out to Oswaldo and tell him that, hey, just to get rid of the wood and help him out somewhat.
Yeah.
It's a shock.
I think that's about all we can do. And that's, that's, that's doing, that's a very nice thing for you to do. You know.
It's, it's a phone call or a letter. It's not, you know, not hard.
We've all thought about it. There's nothing really, we have any, we don't have any teeth to do anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any little thing that we've done would be great. It is a shared driveway, but even if it was a shared driveway, it's very plain sight of the neighbor. There's no screening. And it's natural. It's not the end of the world, but it's, it would, it would bother me, but there's nothing, nothing we can do about it.
I understand. I was hoping by just. Stuck.
Yep.
Alright, I'll reach out to Oswaldo and see what we can do. If we could arrange something, get that cleaned up a little bit.
That'd be great.
I think I have someone in mind.
Alright.
Thank you.
Well, that pretty much sums it up as far as that.
I have a question. Would it be alright if we talked a little bit about the special permit, just to get John's take before he goes on the special permit?
Swapping around, sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm all in.
Because, you know, you're, it's actually come from your desk, so I thought it might be best for you, but.
But it's on yours now.
But I know, it's on two of my desks now. I did bring it up with the, at the board of selectmen meeting and, you know, it's kind of we agreed to talk on, in both, at both locations through zoning and they thought that zoning might come up with some ideas that maybe then it goes back to the board of selectmen and becomes an ordinance, but we're just really not sure the best way. And I want to have a conversation. I have a couple of questions for Gail, like the town attorney on that. But John, if you could just talk, tell us your ideas for this.
Okay, actually, it's rather simple. We just want, basically, an administrative permit like we do for generators and sheds like that. This will be a little bit more complicated, a little bit more involved, I should say, is where I don't have it in front of me. I wish we had, is it, maybe Julie, do you have that, the the Greenwich application? Could you pull that up?
I do.
Okay, well, so here we go. We have an event in town because there's, there's some things that are going, hopefully are going to be coming our way. Which will be, for example, let's look at the picking and fiddling. We could just have them fill out this form, just administrative, so we could check the boxes that need to be checked. This would also work for Elliot, for anything like that. Elliot would need Newtown health. That box would be checked. The fire marshal, do we need traffic? I mean, if you look at this, there's pretty much everything is in there that certain events would need or would be required. And by doing this, we can just simplify, okay, the church is doing this, traffic, check, 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 done, you're good to go. The pop-up pubs that we do all the time, you know, the, just check the boxes that are, that are required. If there's a nighttime thing, is it going to be loud? Do we need to address that? Is it hours? Basically, everything that you could possibly want would be covered with this simple one-page, two-page application that we just quickly review and we're good to go.
And do you think that there should be a fee associated with it, or this is really just administrative so that?
I think it's just administrative because any outside costs would be incurred by the applicant as far as traffic, as far as sanitation, stuff like that. That's not our world. We just want to know what's going on so we can control it. I mean, this is going on, I know in all the other towns and towns, it's the exact same thing. It's pretty much common, common practice these days.
When I was looking at the forms, you know, I liked the organization of the Greenwich one because it's checkboxes. But the information on it, some of it I think isn't necessary, but.
I agree.
Yeah, and I liked some of the things that were in the Newtown one.
Yep.
It's just that that one was kind of written as a narrative and it was hard to look at and difficult, you know, it was just, I didn't like the organization of it.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I just, I compiled the several so we can compare and pick and choose what we would like. The Newtown health regulation, or Newtown regulations were pretty good.
Yes.
Four paragraphs, very short, very sweet. We could probably borrow a lot of that and incorporate that.
Okay. And so would that be private parties too?
Again, it could be anything. Now, private parties are pretty much on your own property. We wouldn't really be too concerned about, this is more for functions. Say you, Muntz and Meadow has a function there with food trucks. Check the boxes. Booth Free School does something there where they might have some outside vendors or something like that. Just check the boxes. It's just to make sure liability issues are covered. I mean, would they need insurance? Then we'd have them get the insurance and the box would be checked. Just pretty much just covering the town, towns side.
So, but that, you know, that also includes the churches too. So it would be nonprofits?
Yeah, basically everything because again, nonprofits, if they're doing something for money, it's just a matter of filling out a quick form. We do the same thing for the pop-up pubs. They come in for the liquor administration. They just fill out the form. We sign off on it and it's good to go. This would be mirror that with other stuff we may or may not need, just, just to make sure.
So I have a suggestion and do you want to, you know, after the holidays, if I come in and we go over the list of things that should be in it?
Yeah.
You know, the things that would be, you know, because you're really the one, I think that's going to be the most helpful to the commission or the board of selectmen to decide the types of things, specifically the things that need to be included, to be checked off, the things that come across your desk.
Yes, because I mean, like the big thing, um, let's look at Elliot's functions.
Yeah.
The Mind Hill Distillery. Distillery, correct. For weddings out there, will he have music? Will he have tents? Will he have this? We don't know. We just gave him ten events that he could have. Now we can say Elliot or distillery, what are you doing? Is this going to be an outdoor concert? Is this going to be a wedding? Is this going to be an art show? You know, a car show? What, exactly what are you doing? And we just, we're not looking to make things harder. We're just looking to know what's going on.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So how does, how does everybody else feel about that? If I sit with John and we come up with a kind of a comprehensive list of the things that are that we think are specific or important to that form? And then we can back to the commission.
That's a good suggestion, Kim. And it seems like that's the way to move things along. The two of you reach an agreement and come to the selectmen or come to us and sanction it and seems like the most expeditious thing to do right now.
Okay, and you know, I know, Jim, you've said that you thought it should be an ordinance and you know, I don't know that it really matters to either of us, the group of us, you know, which way it goes. We'd like it to be the most efficient.
I didn't really say ordinance where the whole town has to vote it through. Just the administration coming from the board of selectmen, like right currently, if somebody wants to use the pavilion, they go to the selectman's office.
Right.
And they explain to them currently what they're going to do, when the event's going to be. And so now we, are we going to take that part of it and give it to downstairs land use as well, or are we going to keep them separate?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. I don't know the answer.
And then the pavilion use is rented out, you know, so somebody's got to keep track of who's got it next August. Because they've already booked it for a certain weekend.
Yeah. Jim, I don't see an issue with that. I mean, I could obviously work hand in hand with Sarah because if they, they book, we'll just have the forms for them to, you know, in unison.
So if somebody wants the pavilion, instead of coming upstairs, they'll just go downstairs?
Uh, no, I think they would go upstairs, but then we would just have that form available up there once it's, once it's done. Or, I mean, that's something we could figure. I understand what you're saying. There is a little bit of a mishmash there.
Yeah.
But I mean.
Either way, I think the form, I'm 100% behind the form.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out the best way to administer it.
Yeah, I see what you're saying because there's like two different avenues. We want to have one way.
Right.
We'll, we'll, we'll work on that. I mean, if it ends up downstairs.
We can talk that through.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's something we can talk through once we have a complete list of the items to include in it and the answer may come through that discussion too. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, that sounds good.
Alright, sounds good.
Thank you for moving that. He's right there. I was like, oh, John.
No, I was going to wait for that one too because I know it's kind of important. We've got some, we've got some plans hopefully for next year. We could, we could do something with this, you know.
Yeah.
Alright. We like your plan. We look forward to your decision.
I stole it.
So that moves us on to item number six, special permit for 64, 61 Moosehorn discussion. Now that the public hearing is over, we'll discuss Dan's plans for a special permit. And you, and do you have any comments?
I think the, this is Kim. I think the application was very complete and very clear and fits with the zoning regulation for non-conformity. I don't see any issues with it.
The only thing, question I have is we're allowing the lateral expansion. And within the regs, it says strictly back, do we have to change anything or does this change it automatically?
So I was asking Karen about when we have a clarification. We're not really changing the regulation. And if we clarify it as it is, we don't change the writing, but should we change a little bit of this question? It would be an extra, it would be an extra thing, but you know, we've agreed that it means.
Because we're allowing the lateral expansion because it's outside of the 50 feet. So that might be, should be possibly written into the regs as an amendment defined because it's not there now.
Well, I thought that too. And I think that's a good idea because two or three years from now, you know, it's going to be in our records, but who's going to find it?
It's like we're allowing them to do, which we agree is okay, but we're not following our regs. So we should do that.
This is Kim. So at the meeting, when Greg Kava came and we were asked for our clarification of the regulation, we were all in agreement that the regulation as stated allows for the lateral expansion outside of the setback. And so that it's, it is as written, clear. And that was what Gail had, our town attorney had also discussed. And that was the point brought up by attorney Kava as well. So there was no need to change the regulation.
Well, one thing to keep in mind too is if someone comes along three or four years from now and they're not an attorney, they're just one of us guys, and they read it, they might say, oh, I can't do that. But they can't because the attorneys, the attorneys read it a way that kind of said you could, but not everybody reads it that way.
So we certainly could, you know.
Clarify it.
Yeah, as you know, right? How many times we've had to write things and then go, oops, I think we have to make that more clear. That's certainly something that's, that's a great idea going forward, you know, if we needed to do that. I could do that at any point, but as stated, it already says it.
I think I was tainted a little bit by our conversations when we wrote that regulation. That the going back was a hard and fast cast and so on thing, but it really, we never wrote it that way. But I just had a, a twinge of wrong memory, but when I read it, when Greg Kava brought it up to us, I clearly saw it as, okay, once it's past the 50 foot mark, lateral could take place. So I was, you know, it was clear to me then. It wasn't clear to me in my recollection. So maybe should we just all read it?
I'm good with it as long as, you know, everybody else, we understand it within this room. As long as somebody stops in, picks up the regs and I want to read this, and as long as they understand it, it's got to be clear to everyone.
Well, why can't we just?
Maybe it is. Maybe it is clear to everyone. John will be the one leasing that, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why can't we just think about it till next month and?
I mean, it doesn't have to be done. This, I'm all, I, you know, the application is fine.
Oh, sure.
Yeah. Just going forward, if we want to kick this around at some point, just to see if we can make it really stand out.
Yeah, let's see if it's really, if it is confusing and if it is at all confusing. We just have to, it doesn't, that doesn't cost us anything.
No.
I agree. I totally agree.
So we'll just put it on the agenda next?
Whenever, yeah, yeah.
Or whenever, yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's easy. Getting back to the application. Of the Do you want? Any other questions among us? For Moosehorn?
Good.
Well, then, then we should entertain to, I'm watching. Approve it. So I have a motion.
This is Elaine Curley and I move to accept the application, approve it for the move on Moosehorn.
I'll second.
I'll second. That's right.
Andy?
I'll second the motion.
Alright. Application for construction, 61 Moosehorn Road, a wall in favor? The approval is for 61 Moosehorn Road is approved.
Do you survey us?
Overload.
We have to survey or not?
What's that?
We don't have to survey.
No, no, we just need.
I would just like to say it.
No, we still have that in our head that because we were used to it that way.
It's a very handsome elf.
The, the design.
It's appropriate scale and.
Well, it's nice that we could see it.
Understandable.
Any clarification if you should, or other. Have a great night, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Thanks, happy holidays.
Alright, that leads us on the zoning regulation purpose section one, review the edited version. We have an edited version. And we've been putting this off and putting it off. We've been busy and we're thinking about putting on the fast rack for next month. But maybe we can move it along right now. You have a, we've gone over it so many times.
So this is Kim. I gave, I sent this off to Karen. And then this was with some hypo change, you know, just some changes that were minor, no. minor, no, uh, content change to it, uh, and made sure it was just sort of cleaned up. So this is the regulation, the, uh, proposed regulation, uh, that everyone has looked at.
Well, it starts with one point three purpose. That, that's the minimum regulation and ends with one point three two seven?
Two full pages and then a little bit on the top of the third.
Yep. Okay.
And it says edited eleven fifteen twenty-two below us.
To, uh, entertain a motion to approve this, uh, for a public hearing uh, in February. We need two months. Because this is a regulation change, we need two months for a public hearing versus one month.
Right.
So, uh, if, if you're all willing, we can move to approve this. Uh, right now, get it out of our hair.
Do we actually move to, this is Kim, do we actually move to put it to public hearing? Okay.
Yes.
In two months.
Uh, whatever that is.
Motion to send it to a public hearing.
Right. That would be February thirteenth.
Second on the public hearing motion?
Unless we change the date.
Right.
It's Candy. Oh, okay. A motion that we move this to a public hearing, so.
This is Elaine, I'll second.
Right, all in favor? All right. Motion to, uh, move this, uh, purpose to public hearing in the February meeting, zoning meeting.
That's better saying it that way, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, next, uh, now we have election of offices. I guess I have to ask for.
She's volunteering. I move to nominate Bill Horrigan as our chairman.
I thought you were volunteering.
No, 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 no. Those days are over. They, their fingers are broken.
This is Kim, I'll second.
All in favor?
All right, so do I say all in favor? All in favor?
Is that unanimous?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now I'm sweating again.
I move to, um, nominate Kim Tester as our vice chair.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, you're such a lucky girl, Kim.
I am a lucky girl. I get to be with you.
So, let's take care of that. That was a, uh, a grueling campaign that I endured to, uh, to reach this position.
At this time, I would like to make a motion to congratulate everyone sitting on the other side of this table for the hard work that is acknowledged and completed every single one.
Well, I made some notes. Here, I, I gave us a new label. It's called Team Stallwork. I referenced, you know, the members, you're really great to work with, you're sharp, and you're stalwart. And Roxbury is really lucky to have you as a coach. And, uh, Karen, you're always there behind the scenes for us, and you're basically our commission guru. Julie, also, you're always behind the scenes for us, and you're our technical expert. No pressure. John, John's gone.
Well, we need.
I was gonna say, he's all in the trenches, he's right in front of the trenches, feeling the adversaries. Head on, he's also the labeled in the TSZR, which is Technical Specialists of Zoning Regulations. And then, Kim, I singled you out. You make chairmanship a whole lot easier. Or a whole lot easy. Plus, Kim has connections in the town hall. Anyway.
I don't think I'll put that in a minute.
Just joking, that's just fine.
Right.
Uh, anyway, thank you very much. It's, uh, it's kind of neat to be here. I don't know, it's a little bit of a a rush at my old, my old age. So, thanks, thanks so much.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
I'm not biased, but.
I can't see it. What does it say? Oh, yes, I have one of those.
I have forty thousand of them.
It was a great campaign.
Almost as grueling as tonight. All right, so the next thing, uh, we have to discuss, uh, the starting time for whenever we have a meeting. Seven o'clock, okay, for everyone?
That's great.
Yeah.
And then we have to, we have, um, I think what we might have to do is, uh, as far as, uh, zoning calendar.
Can we get a motion on the start time to change it?
Okay, a motion on the start time, whenever the meeting is, up to seven o'clock.
Yeah, I make a mo- Candy, I make a motion that our start time be changed to seven P M. For twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
They all approved, or all in favor? Motion's approved.
Thank you.
All right, now, uh, we're limited now to, uh, as of tonight. We have only two options for meetings. One is, as it is Mondays, and the other is, uh, Tuesdays, right?
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
As far as I know.
Candy, you have problems with that?
I, yeah, I can't do the second Tuesdays. I can do the first and the third Tuesdays of every month. I can do Wednesdays, uh, Thursdays, all except the third. And Fridays, I'm fine.
So if you had to miss one meeting, your co-meeting would be all right.
So Candy, you cannot do any second Tuesdays.
Right, second Tuesday from basically September through June, I cannot do.
Why are we looking for a new day?
That's what I want to say, is we're going to look into that, because it came from Patrick. So we're gonna have a meeting in January, and it's going to be called a special meeting. We, it won't go on the calendar. January will be open. And on January, the week, meeting in January, can we do this, Karen? We, we can not have a me-
If we don't, if we don't adopt the calendar, the January meeting will automatically be special.
We call a special meeting. That's the only fly in the, I mean, it'll be a special meeting. We'll do that.
That's not a big deal.
And we'll find out where this, you know, the, the, the background of this, and if we have any flexibility. So we'll have our special meeting on the second Monday.
Okay.
Right, we're all, we all can do that.
Well, that's, that's.
Do now and then, we'll, uh, we'll find out the background of this and, uh,
All right, so there's no regular meeting for January. It's a special meeting.
Same date, same meeting, same stuff, but it's just.
Only one thing on the agenda, just, just, just.
Well, it could be whatever, whatever we put on, but we can't, you know, add, add once we develop the agenda. Oh, I see what you're saying. Is that the only item that will be on it? It could be. Yeah, I see your point. Yeah, special meeting usually is a restricted agenda to a. Jim's right about that.
I thought we were going to discuss purpose next month?
No, that's going to be in February.
February, public hearing.
Oh, oh, right, right, right.
Far we don't have anything in January.
Technically, do we, uh, not have a meeting in January, but then two weeks down the road, a week down the road, if other things come on the agenda, have a special meeting? The last special meeting we called was only a week in, week notice.
So there's one thing, I believe, right?
Right.
To discuss.
On that, you mean last one?
On the special meeting.
Yeah, oh, there's only one thing you can.
Yeah, it's very specific, I think. You know?
No, no.
Okay.
Um, you can have a special meeting, and as long as you list your agenda items, Port of Finance's meeting tomorrow night is a special meeting. They have five items on there. They cannot add to it, because it's already been posted. So, but you can have, as long as you can follow your outline. But you have to stick to it, so you can, you can address more than one agenda topic, but you can't add to it that way.
Julie, how late did you create that agenda?
Forty-eight hours.
Oh, it could be very quick.
Yeah, very quick.
Okay, okay, so we're okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be like, this is Kim, so it'd be like a regular meeting, and it's just so we call it a special meeting.
Right, yes, because there's no assigned date at this point.
Okay, that sounds easy.
Yeah. Next, I was gonna ask, do we have enough time to get the information we need for January ninth with the holidays? I mean, Christmas is coming up, New Year's is coming up, I mean.
Oh, we can, we can find. The.
Kind of running out of time.
No, it, it's good. I mean, for the, for the dates.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, we can, we can get that figured out.
Okay.
Yeah, that's me other cat talking. Jim knows this.
So basically, all this is, we're trying to come up with another day for our meeting.
For our calendar for next.
And no other day's been suggested.
Uh, we just knew as of today that our options were Monday or Tuesday.
Well, Tu- Tuesday was the one suggested to us to change from Monday to Tuesday, the second. Am I right about that?
There were emails that went around.
Yeah.
Of what would work for members and what wouldn't.
When did they go out?
Two weeks ago?
A couple of weeks.
You didn't see it? Oh, okay, Kim circulated a email, asking people.
Oh, because that's why it's all new to me. I've never heard of this.
Oh, you didn't see the email. Okay, sorry about that.
But you know, Jim, what it might, what might have happened is, um, it might have been, that's why I checked with you on your email address, so you may have gone to that weird number, that other one.
Well, it's not fifty-eight, it's thirty-eight.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Everything else is the same. Somehow they, it came up with fifty-eight, which is a typo. And it's thirty-eight.
Yeah, I thought I think might have happened. So, I think.
No.
If I, if I may, this, um, the changing of it, we're just trying, uh, what Patrick was trying to do is to streamline, um, meeting, the, uh, meeting times, and so also there's a balancing act with our two people, one who administrates and does the minutes, and then the, you know, they're sitting right there in the room with you, and the other one that has to pull information together to prep for various commissions. Um, and so I think we're just trying to create some, uh, work balance as well in this, trying to, trying to see if there's some way to do that. So I think that's part of the, um, the conversation that he's been having with people. If that, does that make sense? Did I say that clearly, or did I mess that up?
I did, but we, well.
And it's not, he's, he's, what he told me was that it wasn't a mandate that we had to switch and have it be, had to be on a Tuesday. You know, but there were only certain number of dates available, or days available, based on the other boards and commissions and the way things were, um, uh, balancing out. But, and so if those are the only two options we have, then, you know, most likely then we want Candy to come to meetings, so it sounds like we, after some research, I'll just, you know, we can con- uh, confirm what I'm, what I've just said, but, um, we might end up just sticking with a Monday. I don't know why the Thursday couldn't work, maybe because there's conflicts of other boards or commissions. But I don't know the answer to that.
Planning meets the second Thursday, C B A meets the third.
Right.
So the first and the fourth are available.
Yeah, how about the Tuesday, like the first Tuesday, third Tuesday?
That's, that's the Board of Selectmen.
And then Port of Finance, the third.
All the other dates for Tuesdays and Thursdays were, were, were taken, I think.
So you're saying Thursdays, all Thursdays are taken?
No, no.
No, but I think there were some people that couldn't do Thursday, that.
No, I, I can't do the third.
Right.
Well, no, the first and the fourth Thursdays are available.
Okay, so I think maybe those are some of our options. So it was either Monday, that the Tuesday, which was the second Tuesday, and then Julie, you just said, sorry, the.
The first Thursday of the month is available. And the fourth Thursday.
All, all of us who are impacted are Alan's not here. But, uh, and Cheryl's not here.
The, the problem for me with the fourth Thursday is it puts it too close to the wetlands meeting.
Oh, that's, yeah, because that, you needed.
I, I couldn't, I couldn't do, possibly do back-to-back wetlands and zoning.
Yeah, that would be a lot.
The fourth was not.
So maybe the first Thursday.
We have. So that second Tuesday's out, so we'd have either that, the Monday, or the first Thursday? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Sounds like it.
Okay.
Be nice to see it on a grid, so we can see what, what everything is.
Be the first, the second, the second Monday of the month, would it stay that way?
The problem is they're, they're asking that we move it off of Monday to a Tuesday or a Thursday, I think, right, Kim?
Yes, but it's not, I mean, he's not, yes, he's asking that, it's not the.
If possible.
If possible, right.
So Kim, you can make a Thursday, the first Thursday?
Yeah, I'm fine with, uh, I'm fine with all of it.
Candy?
Check with them?
We can check.
Yeah.
And if he can do it, Thursday. So we have to check with Cheryl and Elle.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then we'll, they'll know that information by the next.
Yeah, so next, next meeting will be a special meeting.
And that will be one of the things on the agenda.
Yep. Thank you, Matt, that helped, that was great.
I, I made myself a chart on my paper.
That's what we need.
Yeah, I had to, I had to do. Yeah, I put my art skills together. Made a chart. Okay, so, um.
Okay, so one of the agenda items for next year will be the calendar.
Yeah, absolutely.
Twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, yeah. That would be the carryover from this.
Yeah.
There isn't anything else. Far we're closing everything else out.
Good.
Sorry.
That could be the only thing.
So that's done. That leaves us with the chairman's comments, and I have some comments here, but I'm not going to talk about them tonight. We've been here long enough. But I will bring about, it'll probably be on the agenda for next, because it has to do with, uh, you know, the word character, and, you know, we, we've lost so many of our teeth to the state, you know, we have to start sometime figuring out how do we can dig our heels in a little bit and have a little bit of authority, and, uh, I think the new term character, uh, with all its adjectives, it's, it's more than adjectives attached to it. I think, I think it gives us a lot of opportunities to have some, you know, some authority in our own town, so, and I think it's something that should be a a tool that we can use, even a default position to go to, so we'll, we'll talk about that next, next, next month, no rush. So, that leaves us with a drum roll. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Candy, I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
And second?
I'll leave it up to Elaine, second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's adjourned.